Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the April 25th, 2022 City Council Meeting. I'll now call the meeting to order. Thank you.
We can't hear you.
Now time for our Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Tom Moore.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mayor Kalmak.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Verapapa.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmembers Justarsek.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll now have the approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item? Okay, Deputy City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, we had two emailed comments received and three PowerPoints that were received after the posting of the agenda and were distributed to the City Council and made available to the public.
Okay, thank you. Now call for motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Please vote on your iPad. Thank you. Now for our presentations and recognitions, I'll call upon City Manager Ingram for the first one.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, the City Manager's Office had the opportunity to support the Golden Age Foundation at Leisure World to help celebrate several birthdays of Leisure World's centenarians. With the support of both Councilmember Moore as well as Councilmember Masalavet, the city was able to assist with donating grocery store gift cards and bouquets of flowers from our local flower shop, Devon's Garden. From our office, our two management analysts, Jennifer Robles and Lauren Berich, along with Erica Halberg from the Recreation Department, were on site to help prepare the items and deliver to residents last Wednesday, April 20th. Councilmember Moore and Masalavet, I know the two of you both each respectively donated funds out of your council discretionary funds to support this event. So before I turn this over, this presentation over to staff, wanted to give each of you an opportunity to make some comments. And Councilmember Masalavet, we'll start with you.
Thank you. The organization, Golden Age Foundation, does a lot of work in Leisure World. They're a 501(c)(3). They donate tons of money to the community. They buy buses, they buy a whole gym full of equipment, they do all kinds of things for the community, and the centenarian celebration is one of them. It started a number of years ago. Of course, it took a break during COVID, and now we're just gonna, we're getting kind of abbreviated start because we can't all sit down and have lunch together and celebrate each person individually. So going around to everyone's home was a great idea, and presenting them with their certificate of making it to the grand old age of 100 or more. Many of those people are, you'd never know that they were 100 or older. They're up around, they ride bikes, they go dancing, they go shopping, some of them even drive. And it's just a wonderful thing, and it's a great opportunity to celebrate someone as they get to the centenarian age. And Anna Derby is the president of Golden Age Foundation, and she is really instrumental in pulling everyone together to bring, she will not let you rest until you agree to do what she wants you to do. So it gets done. Isn't that amazing? And so between the Golden Age Foundation, and I know the Sunshine Club was participating in preparing things, and the staff at the city, oh my gosh, everybody came together. It was wonderful. And thank you, Anna, and thanks to everyone who put in their time and the effort to make that a special day.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with everything. Thank you to Anna Derby, did a wonderful job arranging the event, and the Golden Age Foundation for inviting us to participate. It was wonderful honoring 26 seniors in Leisure World, and they're over 100 years old. One of the common things I heard from the families and others is that because there are so many activities in Leisure World and social aspects with clubs and concerts and services, that it makes life more enjoyable, and I think that contributes to helping people reach this milestone. This event is special because it creates a special moment in the centenarians' lives. It was personally very fulfilling and to volunteer and make a difference. And I'd like to thank the city staff assisting with this event, especially Patrick Gallegos, Lauren Berich, Jennifer Robles, and Erica Halberg. I heard that many people, how great the staff was helping out with this, so it was terrific, you're terrific helping out, so thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I was just gonna acknowledge Patrick in saying although he's not sitting up here, he was a key member of making this event happen and supporting the city staff team. So without further ado, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to Team Lauren and Jen to present tonight's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Ingram. We were thrilled to assist Anna Derby, president of the Golden Age Foundation, as you heard, with this event, and this is the third event that Anna has been involved with. The previous two events were in 2014 and 2019, but obviously with COVID, there were no more in-person celebrations, so it shifted a bit. But the Golden Age volunteer team found a new way to celebrate.
Anna and her Golden Age Foundation team of volunteers worked very hard to honor and celebrate 26 centenarians who live in Leisure World by doing individual deliveries. Each delivery included a gift bag containing a birthday card with gift cards, a bouquet of flowers from Devon's, and lunch from Hof's Hut. Councilmember Moore was also on site and helped make deliveries.
So Erica, Jen, and I delivered to three residents, Pearl, Mary, and Ruth, and it was really wonderful to meet them, their family, and their friends. We could've stayed and talked for hours, honestly. I agree, Councilmember Moore is very personally fulfilling, and it was very special to connect with them and hear their stories. Jen and I were joking, we wanted to do it every morning.
I definitely agree, Lauren. It was truly a special moment to share with our residents and hear their words of wisdom through the stories that they shared. We would like to thank our City Council for their support, our Assistant City Manager, Patrick Gallegos, and our Executive Assistant, Megit Coats, who helped execute the event. However, we especially want to thank Anna Derby for her partnership. At this time, we would like to invite Anna to the podium as she would like to share a few words.
Thank you for inviting me on behalf of the Golden Age Foundation. I don't know what I would, we would have done if we didn't get your City of Seal Beach staff involved, and I am so grateful. We reached out to Patrick, and Patrick sent just half of our corporation, so I'd like to thank you. They provided us a certificate of centenarians and beautiful flowers, and everyone loved their flowers from Devon's, and gift card from the Sprouts, and we have a couple other sponsors, and they get the gift card from Hof's Hut, and they have a gift card from Rob's. So we wanna make sure that we support the local merchant. And you said it enough, so I don't wanna say too much, but I'd like to read a couple letters I received from family members, and probably this is gonna say all. This is one of our centenarian, William Miller's daughter, who, she lives in different units, but she lives there, and she said, "I can't find an email for the Golden Age Foundation, but Dad, and I wanted to extend our most heartfelt thanks to everyone who participated in Dad's 100th birthday celebration. I can begin to tell you how happy it made Dad," and he's still talking about it. "I recognize that there were many, many people who put this kind of gesture together. The people who pick up the gift cards, flowers, lunch, the certificate from the City of Seal Beach, packaging every, up and delivering it, and spending time talking to Dad to make him feel special." Melli Herrera and her husband, they were the one volunteer to visit them. They were very kind. This was a very large effort for everyone involved, and I would appreciate it if you would express our gratitude to everyone. So what I did is, since they are our shareholder, I sent it to editor, and they're gonna publish this as Dear to Editor next week. By the way, our weekly publication is working on very special edition for our April 28th, and I'm gonna make sure that you guys get it. And there's one more, this is, and, Dear Anna, you did a splendid job. Usually when someone plans a party, there are always people who say, "It was a very nice butt." But this time, there were no buts. I know it took a lot of work, planning, and energy to accomplish a tribute like that for those of us who are 100 years old this year. The planning was perfect. The flowers I received were the most beautiful bouquet I've ever had. The lunch was perfect. The card and tribute were really appreciated. The couple who delivered the goodies were charming. We enjoyed, we enjoyed our time with them. Your graciousness and generosity were appreciated by all. Thank you again. B. Veachery Roth and her family. So as you see, there's 26, and I believe I involved the last two, 2014, we started in 2019, and this is a third, and we had our most number, and during that planning, between last December to this April, we lost a couple, but we still included them, and we visited their house, even though our centenarian wasn't there. The family really appreciated. Thank you. Thank you so much. Your four girls were wonderful, and only thing is, they were like a towel, and I feel like a child. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, for sharing your words. We truly enjoyed being part of the event with you. And to recognize you, Mayor Kalmak has the Certificate of Recognition for you.
On behalf of the City Council, it gives me great pleasure to have this certificate of recognition for you for all the fine work that you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Got it.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Okay. So now we're gonna have our monthly update from the Seal Beach Historical Resources Foundation, and we'll call on City Manager Ingram to introduce that item.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to make a few brief comments. As the Council knows, last year, you approved the formation of the Seal Beach Historic Resources Foundation and also appointed the original five members of that board with the sole purpose of preserving historic resources that are important to our community. As a result of that effort, then, we appointed a staff liaison to work closely with the foundation, and that is one of our management analysts, Lauren Berich, and they've made some pretty significant progress so far. And in discussion with Mayor Kalmak, he suggested and requested, quite actually, that we start providing a monthly update to the council and the community at a council meeting, just so that we can talk about that progress moving forward. So with that, I want to turn the presentation over to Lauren, who will provide that update for you and be able to address any questions that you might have as well. Lauren?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Ingram. As you noted, last year, the Seal Beach Historic Resources Foundation was created as an independent nonprofit organization intended to hold and maintain historic resources for the benefit of the community. The specific purposes of the nonprofit corporation are to preserve the historical resources important and relevant to the city of Seal Beach, support public efforts to preserve the resources, and educate the public. Second, provide community public benefit programs with particular emphasis on education programs on a charitable and non-discriminatory basis. And third, carry out other charitable and educational activities associated with these goals. So after an application process last year, council selected the first five members of the board, and they include Deb Machin, Lawrence Kruger, Emily Paris Sandler, Linda Stauffer, and Larry Strother. And the city clerk also filed the Articles of Incorporation with the state to get us started, and, you know, with the Seal Beach Car Show coming up, I thought these photos would be appropriate. So as you can imagine, there is a lot of work to get through when you're establishing a new nonprofit, and the city hosted the first couple of meetings on behalf of the foundation. So now the meetings occur the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month and are held at the senior center just across the street. At these first meetings, the bylaws were adopted and the officers were selected. Deb was selected as president, Lawrence was selected as vice president, Emily was selected as secretary, and Linda was selected as treasurer. So the bylaws include Section 13 about a city advisor, which authorizes the city manager or their designated to serve as a non-voting advisor. So in that capacity, I attend and participate in the meetings, but in advisory capacity only and have no voting power. I have been working with the board and would like to give particular thanks to Deb with completing all of that required paperwork.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the board has also adopted mission and vision statements. So the mission of the Seal Beach Historic Resources Foundation is to collect, preserve, promote, share, and celebrate the historic resources and cultural heritage of Seal Beach as well as ensure its preservation for present and future generations through educational and community benefit programs. The vision of the Seal Beach Historic Resources Foundation is to inspire pride, excitement, and passion for the history and spirit of Seal Beach within the community through acquiring and sharing knowledge in a relevant, accessible, and inclusive manner. So the next steps include just continuing to meet on that regular basis. We continue to complete and fill out all of the necessary paperwork required to get the organization up and running to formally receive nonprofit status, and I know the board is very eager to start hosting events and receive community input and really get to the mission of what the board was founded for, and we're excited to see what else we will be able to accomplish this year. So with that, unless there are any additional questions, I will pass it back to the mayor.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Lauren.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a Donate Life proclamation and presentation by Emily Earhart.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Kalmak, esteemed City Council members of the City of Seal Beach and City Manager. Thank you for your support of April's DMV Donate Life Month. I'm Emily Earhart, a resident of Seal Beach, and I'm also a One Legacy Ambassador. One Legacy is Southern California's OPO, Organ Procurement Organization. I am also a two-time tissue recipient. I've received a heart tissue valve twice, and I would like to share with you my connection to organ and tissue donation and why it is so important. I was born with a complex heart defect and have been in continuous cardiac care my whole life. I've had 11 heart procedures and four open-heart surgeries. At the age of 15, I went into heart failure, and I received my first gift of life, a tissue donation that allowed me to live a quality of life I had never known before. All of a sudden, I was able to perform in theater arts at high school. I went to the college of my dreams, Go Bears, Cal Berkeley. I went to culinary school. I opened a restaurant in the recession. I don't recommend it. The restaurant, yeah, it did stay, it stayed, yeah, or the recession, right? I went, I lived and studied abroad in Europe for many years, and I met and married my college sweetheart, Ryan, who's sitting in the back row, also a City of Seal Beach resident. I was doing well and thriving for 15 years, but then tissue valves do have a lifespan themselves, and at the age of 30, I went into heart failure again. I had two open-heart surgeries back-to-back. It was a rough couple of years, but I am now thriving again. I work for a national heart nonprofit advocating and empowering other heart patients. My husband and I recently purchased a house here in Seal Beach and are in the process of adopting. So I stand here before you today to thank you for listening and to encourage all of you to be an organ donor or tissue donor, to check the pink dot, say yes at the DMV, and also to honor my recent donor, who I was recently connected with, his family. Sergeant Gregory Ames was the selfless man who, in his final act, gave life to more than 20 more people through his organ and tissue donation. So on behalf of him and his family, my parents, my family, I encourage you all to check the donor box. Thank you.
So if you would just remain at the podium.
Yes.
I'm gonna read a summary of the proclamation. Organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. More than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, 17 people die each day while waiting. The need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. A single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and a small intestine can save up to eight lives. Deceased organ donors saved more than 40,000 lives last year. Any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. Being a registered donor does not impact the life-saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org. California residents can also apply when applying for or renewing their driver's licenses or ID cards at the DMV. In recognition of National Donate Life Month, I hereby proclaim April 2022 as DMV Donate Life Month in the city of Seal Beach.
Got it. We got Captain Henderson in there, too.
Thank you so much. I would have to have something to do with that. Thank you so much.
Emily was at Berkeley and was a classmate of my son. Okay, now, next we have Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through 7th, 2022. And I'll now read a summary of the proclamation. The Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government. The Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants and provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. Professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all. The municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government. Pause. Where'd it go here?
Uh-oh.
Okay. Okay. As the mayor of the City of Seal Beach, I hereby recognize the week of May 1st through 7th, 2022 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Now time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and may not, not to any individual. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Matt. My name is Arnold Cicerone. Mr. Mayor and City Council, we were here a week ago under this MOU that was signed and put in front of you as a, to take over the pickleball court and the tennis center. And two things I want to do with this right now. When we were here, the attorney and Mike on camera said that it was 10% of the net. You remember this? Here's the copy. Nothing's 10% of the net. It's 20% of the gross and 10% of the net in the clubhouse. This proposal that was brought to the city council and to you, Mr. Mayor, was done in a covert way. I actually thought, when I heard the speaker, I thought it was one of Mike's people working for him. They said there was no problems up there, they're gonna run all this. These people are not qualified to run this. You have a good running facility. All we want you to do is resend this, and the thing was to resend it. Now you have the ability to resend it because the whole deal was fake and lied to you. It was under a lie. This is your contract with the 20%. How anybody missed this is unbelievable. You have fiduciary responsibility to the City of Seal Beach. That's to look out for us. So what we're having up here is a private club being taken over by one of the city councilmen to run a private group up at the Seal Beach. to run a private group up at the Seal Beach Tennis Club. This is not right. If we have problems at the tennis club, let's get together, sit down, let's lay a thing out. You have got people there that can work, that can do a great job. The other thing that was brought up, and it keeps bringing up all the time, I don't understand this, the nonprofit. I'm going to read something. A common misconception about nonprofits is that they are run completely by volunteers. Most nonprofits have staff that work for the company, possibly using volunteers to provide nonprofit services under the direction of the paid staff. Mike said, "Oh, we're not getting paid. You don't have to get paid today. You get paid tomorrow." There's nothing wrong with getting paid in a nonprofit. We don't need a nonprofit up there. We've got enough stuff up there going on. What we have to do is take your responsibility. We need high standards in our local government. You can't get hoodwinked into doing something. And I'm suggesting, I'll give you the stuff you need, and I'm also suggesting a reprimand letter to the people that wrote this thing up and made it sound to you like this, everything is screwed up there, and this is so perfect, this is going to work out. What we have now is, we've got a group up there, you gave them the permission, and now we've got the Three Stooges running the pickleball court. This is not right. You've got to stop this, at least. You can't give it to an active member of the city council. Mike should either retire, quit, or whatever, and then put in as a private person. Did you ever think, when you people go up, you, Mr. Mayor, city council, when you go to the police station or something, you're the boss. If you tell the guy, "Hey, you know what? I don't like the barrel here, move it." What are they going to do? They're going to get out and they're going to move the barrel. What are they going to do when I go up, "Hey, move the barrel"? You know what they're going to tell me? You're using your power, even if you don't know you're using it. So what I'm suggesting, stop this thing immediately and let's get a board together. You've got a good group going up there. It's a lot of people from all over, but we don't want a private club.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Thank you. I'm done. I hope you do this.
Hi, I'm Matt Filler. I live in College Park West. And I'd like to speak about the I-405 Improvement Project, and specifically that they are in the process of opening or closing the Studebaker Loop Ramp from, I'm sorry, the Seal Beach Boulevard Loop Ramp, where it goes northbound, where you go on to go westbound on the I-405, and that goes to the 22, the 605 as well. They will be opening the ramp that's been closed for the 40, that goes to the 22, but all of that traffic will also be routed to that track, along that newly reopened route and out to the Studebaker, then back onto the freeway. That's the detour. I just found out about the detour today, and when they used, set up a detour like that a few years ago for the Connectors Project, they timed all the lights so that there was very little delay when you went to that, when you went to those two lights. It's already a high-traffic area. They retimed the lights since, and it is not as fast as it was then, and certainly you have to wait almost every time for the, to get back onto the freeway, as everybody, including Mr. Moore, who lives in College Park West, is very much aware of. So I've asked OCTA to retime these lights for no delay on the on-ramp and quicker response on the off-ramp light, as was done. This should have been done prior to the closure tonight. OCTA says a crew will be monitoring traffic and will be advised of my concerns. I'd appreciate it if the city could reinforce that, and is, are you, Dave Spitz here? I'll try and talk to him also. The merger of the I-405 southbound and 605 southbound connector to the 22 also is part of that detour, and that is striped according to 1950 standards. There are no dash lines. It's just get to the end and merge. Now, most drivers ignore that, but a lot of people don't ignore it. They go to the end, and then it ends up blocking up traffic unnecessarily. And I guess the reason is that the merge is too short. It just got a little longer, or could have, when they widened that for the Montecito Channel Project. The Montecito Channel Project, they're widening that channel, so they had to widen the off, or the connector as they, over top of one half of the culvert, and then they've now closed the other half to widen that half of the culvert. So that, the pavement that's widened, it ends up curving back to where the existing ramp is, but if you extend it, you know, a few yards, really, you'd actually add a little bit to the, to that merge, and they should re, I've been trying to get someone to restripe that merge so that it's striped lines like any normal merge instead of the 1950 standards, because that intersection, the 22 and Studebaker, was all built before the current standards, and the turns are too sharp and all of that.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Nothing like the 22, like US-2 in Burbank or in Pasadena. Finally, the widening of the Montecito Channel itself should have been another opportunity to provide a drivable backup emergency access to College Park West. Four-wheel drives and pedestrians should have no problem as it is, but fire engines can't get through, and regular cars would probably get stuck. So I'd appreciate support of the city to, for those changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I know our practice is typically we don't, either the council or staff respond directly to commenters, but since we did have a representative, a couple of representatives from OCTA here at our last council meeting with an update on the 405 project, I will just say, Councilmember Moore did reach out to us today with the concern about the northbound 405 on-ramp closure beginning tonight. Our staff did reach out to OCTA's project management team, and they have assured us that they've worked with both Caltrans District 7 and 12 on timing for both the westbound Studebaker and 22 ramp, as well as the eastbound ramp. So we will, just want to assure all of you, as well as the public, we'll continue to monitor that with OCTA throughout the closure of that on-ramp.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Nick Masetti. I live at 13650 Del Monte, Unit B24, and I'm your most recent planning commission appointee, and I wanted to introduce myself to the two of you that haven't met me, and thank you for approving my appointment. But since I'm retired, I can look at these agendas and the details, and so the lighting assessment, which is on the agenda tonight, I'm sure it's nothing that's really in detail, but I looked at what I was being assessed, and my APN, my apartment, my assessor's parcel number was on there, and I'm being assessed $1.21, and I said, "Well, I can afford to pay $1.21 for the street lighting." But I want to protest the amount shown on the city council agenda's street lighting District 21, 2022, 2023 Engineers Annual Levy Report on its page 19 of 97 is for APN The amount is for the arterial assessment, and it's $1,156. It turns out that's the Leisure World Golf Course, and that's an eight-acre parcel, and I did the math, and you're apparently charging $144 per acre for that in order to reach the 1156. And we don't use that at night. We only use it during the daytime. And so I think the proper assessment for that is what's called normal daytime use, and that's at 24, 29 per acre. So the assessment ought to be something like $194. So that's my protest. Thank you. Glad to meet you.
My name is Michelle Gallaher, and I came here to the city council meeting on April 11th thinking that what I said was going to matter. I was speaking for myself and for some of the members of the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center in regard to the approval of the MOU. I thought this was a meeting in advance of consideration for the granting of said MOU. After leaving the podium, I received a text from an SBT NPC member that a tournament had already been scheduled by the new association. I now feel some of the council members were not above board with their duties of hearing from the constituents involved. I don't think you can just take over a city tennis and pickleball center for a tournament without having prior city approval. This leads me to believe that perhaps this was a done deal for the MOU before a vote was ever even taken. I'm very disappointed in the way things were handled and how we felt completely dismissed. I hope in the future you will not do other city organizations this way. How silly do we feel now? There's an old Roman historian, Salist, who said, "Harmony makes small things grow. Lack of it makes great things decay." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I brought my pickleball paddle. $145 now. I'm awful nervous. Council members, mayor, much-needed law enforcement, and audience, even if you don't play pickleball. Pickleball at the Seal Beach Tennis Courts is the best in Southern California, and maybe even more. We have people that come from Tustin and other places, try to move us locals out. A lot of this is new, the information is new to me at the last minute. Just a few years ago, no one knew what pickleball was. Marilyn, in the orange shirt, is the official pickleball USA, all over the United States, ambassador at the Seal Beach Tennis Courts. Brenda is, I believe, the manager. They work wonderfully together. We have tournaments before the lockdowns. Everybody played together. The better ones played with the better, the weaker ones played with each other, but we all socialized, we all got along great. And I'm just very concerned about what I've heard, and I just wanted to come and, I guess, say whatever I can remember to say. It's a little nervous here. The one thing I just heard, though, was about, it's the tax code. Somebody help me real quick, I can't remember when, a nonprofit. Nonprofits make tremendous money because they pass through. It's a tax code, is all that is. They pass through all their earnings, usually the group of people that run a nonprofit, they make higher salaries than other people. Even the employees make higher salaries because the money passes through to them. The corporation doesn't pay an income tax. It goes to the people through their salaries. So I'm a retired fiduciary. That's where that comes from. And, let's see if I can read this. Something else I'd like to point out, too, about Seal Beach Tennis Courts is, I believe that the morning is, in the morning before noon, it is a private club, membership only. But in the afternoon, it is open to the public, non-membership, and that's tax-funded. And all those things influence what is happening now in some way. And if the old, if the new people coming in don't know certain laws or certain structures or how things are handled, and people don't teach them, then that's how you have guffaws happen in structure. So I can only say it's just been the best. It's run well as it is. I don't want any more divisiveness. The lockdowns and all of the last couple of years have just been hard on any kind of structure. Thank you. Hope to see you.
Thank you.
I know I'm walking away, but could I say one more thing? Marilyn started the pickleball group when people didn't know what it was. She brought in her friends. We are the friendliest, so if you're new, we're all happy to play with you.
Good evening. My name is Katia Reimer. I just wanted to share a few thoughts. Today, I met an older divorced lady who told me she lived in Leisure World. She was working at Walmart, so I'm pretty sure that whatever fixed income she is on is not sufficient for her lifestyle, and she had to supplement it. Before COVID, I worked full-time. I had a husband and a dog, to which I came home to each night. COVID forced me into retirement, and I no longer have a husband or a dog. I found myself completely alone. I found pickleball. I took lessons from Gary and eventually moved over to play in Marilyn's group. I can't begin to tell you how pickleball and the Seal Beach Tennis Club had enriched, has enriched my life. I play at least four times a week, sometimes five. I'm not a member, but spend at least $48 a month at the club to play. If I had to become a member, I would have no problem with it. But there are people whose incomes may not allow for them to become members. For example, the lady that I met at Walmart. I'm pretty sure that if I told her, "You can come, but you have to pay a $45 or whatever registration fee and a $45 monthly fee," she probably would never try it. So before leaving Walmart, because I wasn't thinking, I said, "Hey, why don't you come to the club and go into the office, find out where Marilyn's group is, and, you know, look for me, and we'll get you started?" Then I realized that if it changes to it's a private membership, I won't be able to do that, and the people won't be able to come. Marilyn has actively promoted pickleball at the center. Her dedication and welcoming attitude are the reasons that so many of us have become involved in the fun sport. Changing it to a members-only facility will exclude so many of our friends, and it will make it so much more difficult to recruit. Lastly, who will benefit by changing the club and forming a nonprofit? Isn't nonprofit supposed to mean it will benefit the community? Not just the affluent community, but also the middle-class community? The club has been thriving. Let's build on our base. Let's keep it a community service club. One more thing, and I don't mean this in an offensive way, but the idea of having a politician come with his leverage and his power of community with people who follow him is not in the interest of the general community of pickleball. The implications, although they may even be well-intended, could possibly cause complications and bias. Pickleball should be free of any political ties or connections. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Marilyn Ciceroni. I'm a member of Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center and I'm also the USA Pickleball Association Ambassador for Seal Beach. As the ambassador, I promote this sport and the Pickleball Association. I have been involved in the growth of pickleball at Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center since 2014. I had a meetup group that reached over 300 members. I am asking at this time that you rescind the memorandum of understanding, also referred to as MOU, that was approved on April 11th. The reasons for that are following. There is much information that you would be prudent to study. There have been many improper steps taken in the formation of the Seal Beach Pickleball Association. We don't need this association. We need a person chosen who is qualified and vetted to work in conjunction with Brenda on the pickleball side of the center. You can't have two separate worlds there. We need unity in order to maintain trust in the running of the facility. There are actual pickleball coaches that would be able to handle the pickleball side of the center and would have the expertise needed to make Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center the jewel of Orange County. Mike Verapapa prematurely signed the MOU as president before the MOU was voted on. That's how confident he was that this was being fast tracked through. Mike Verapapa has been planning this takeover for close to a year. He has taken steps to make sure he had all the people he needed to fall into place in order to form this association. He had someone write up the 501(c)(3) nonprofit portion. He had attorney Steele write up the MOU with all its legal terminology. Why was the city attorney used to write the MOU when it is not city council business? But it's a document for Mike Verapapa, private citizen. Being president of Seal Beach Pickleball Association is not city council business. It's Mike Verapapa's own creation. Mike Verapapa has surreptitiously been responsible, along with Jill Ingram, to put the MOU on the consent calendar. The consent calendar is only to be used for routine matters that come before the city council. The MOU is not a routine item. It's a highly controversial item that begs to have more study, investigation, and time spent with people reviewing it that understand what it all means. The way it is now, if the MOU goes forward, the whole community of Seal Beach and surrounding cities are going to know that Mike Verapapa created this association behind closed doors. It has been shrouded in secrecy. Thank goodness for one city council member who questioned the MOU and the need to have further discussion on this matter and asked that it be pulled from the consent calendar. Otherwise, it would have been approved in one fell swoop. I thought the MOU was in the planning and discussing phase. I was astounded that it was going to be swept in under the consent calendar. Alexis Smidell, the Community Development Director, presented a report stating, staff is recommending approval of an MOU. She wrote, the city is agreeing to designate the Seal Beach Pickleball Association as the primary entity to coordinate and promote pickleball at the center. She also talks about them sharing 10% of the net profits with the city of Seal Beach. Her entire report worked out all the details on the formation of this association. I would like to know where Alexa got her information to present her report on April 11th. The citizens of Seal Beach should not have to worry that the city officials are not being careful with what gets approved and the clandestine manner things are pushed through. Why the reluctance to study the MOU? This was not done above board. I see a conflict of interest, abuse of power, unethical behavior on the part of Mike Verapapa and all who assisted him to form the association. Please take better care of us. We voted for you trusting you would be scrupulous in matters concerning our city and the people. This memorandum of understanding was important for Mike Verapapa to get passed so he could run a tournament on April 30th. He had Brenda's April 9th tournament pulled to make way for the not yet passed association. It was being planned before the approval of the MOU. We ask that this April 30th tournament be canceled while this matter is further reviewed. There is no need to rush this. The association is a corrupt endeavor. Please don't be part of it.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Gill. Come away from Australia for this. I've been coming to America for now 22 years with martial art tournaments, doing very well at Las Vegas and the world championships, et cetera. I have my team over here of Americans as well. I'm married to American and my grandfather's American. So I feel as though it's a big part of my life. I, um, I was coming off, coming off professional, pretty much professional tennis and martial arts, teaching, competing for 40 years. The body feels it now. I discovered this wonderful sport called pickleball. Yes, it's a fun game with a funny name. It's named up, originally it was named after Pickles the Dog, but it's actually, Pickleball Races, it's a true story back in 1965. Pickleball is now America's fastest growing sport. It's huge. And that become the world's fastest growing sport because it's fun, it's social, and it's just, it's amazing. It's, it's, it's even less competitive than tennis. It's less personal. You know, they can't remember half the time you beat somebody, you know? It's just so, so much fun and people are great. And I started my pickleball journey back in January 2020, just over two years ago, when my wife and I moved, well, actually we got married in 2017 in Newport Beach. She's American. We went back to Australia, then we officially moved here, 2020, and discovered this wonderful game called pickleball. And the back's feeling much better now than the old tennis. And it's just so social and so much fun. And I discovered my first game was at Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center, or originally Tennis Center. And I saw these courts with lines on them and just, you know, painted on. And now over the last couple of years, I was joined and become a member, and the last couple of years I've seen, I've been in and out because I've been traveling to play pickleball tournaments, played my first professional event a couple of months ago, couple of months ago in, in Arizona. And I've seen the growth of the pickleball center, thanks to Brenda and Marilyn, who have done a terrific job. I've never seen them grow from painted on lines to this beautiful courts and 16 courts now. And I do understand that Mike had a role with that. Thank you very much, Mike, for that contribution as well. And the city council, you're doing a job because it is America's fastest growing sport. So it would have been done anyway, but that's great. So we've, and, and the expression goes, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's not broke. It seems to be really, really going well. Everyone's enjoying it. I, you know, as far as qualifications involved with the coach, one of the coaches there, I disagree with him coaching there and some support for people wanting media involved in that. But I, I did the PPA, the course, but it's like a very simple course to do, to become a professional coach. Took me two years, my tennis qualifications and years for black belt in martial arts, three, four years. So I can't see the qualifications there. I've also running tournaments now. I'm actually with USA Pickleball running, I've run two tournaments now. I'm running USA Pickleball tournaments all around America and then into Australia to get this wonderful sport into Olympics. So you probably know Los Angeles 2028, we're hoping to be a demonstration sport. And my country, Australia, Brisbane, Australia, 2032. I'm actually going to Australia, play the Australian champs in October, more so my daughter's wedding. And to help promote this one, I put my world championships on next, next year in Australia to look, make it look to the Olympic committee that is a true international sport, which it is, because a lot of college tennis players now playing professional from all around the world, professional pickleball. So with, with, I just, I just don't understand. I, I, coming from martial art background with mute respect, teamwork professionalism, honest, ethical behavior up here, I just don't understand. I only found out about this about four days ago. My, my team, who I play with, never heard about it. Phil's one of them. You didn't know about it. Bunch of the others didn't know what was going on until we spoke to Marilyn. And there's just been no respect. Marilyn's ambassador since 2014 for USA Pickleball. Brenda's ran the, the sense very efficiently since that time as well. And they weren't even consulted. And, and suddenly we've got these people coming in to do tournaments. You know, I've sent months on the computer and have to study this stuff to, to put tournaments off the USA Pickleball. And, and it's a lot of work to do. And to suddenly say you need to put a nonprofit on to raise money to fix the courts. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. The courts are fine. It's running fine. And you've got a coach in there that wasn't approved by Brenda, who never even played a tournament.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
And in conclusion, I just don't think it was done correctly and, and it should be the way it is. And there's great people there as it is. And I'm also, you know, wanting, wanting to help the homeless as well. I deliver food to the homeless in L.A. Just to let you know, there's one bugbear I've had of being in America, but, and also want to see if they do, whoever just does this, I'd like them to see, let people play for free. The people who are vulnerable and homeless or people that can't afford it, as the lady mentioned before, at least let them in for free rather than this expensive membership or whatever they're competing to do.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
I have some documents. Do I give them to the city clerk or?
Yes, please.
All right, here we go again. At least there's just one of me. Okay, so last council, council meeting, we saw our Seal Beach Police Department get approval to access military grade self-defense weaponry at their discretion. Personally, I'd just like to say I am all for it. These are tools that can be of great use in difficult situations when used appropriately. I am so thankful to the Seal Beach Police Department for putting their own lives on the line and they deserve every currently available tool to keep us safe. However, two weeks ago, all the military grade weaponry could not prevent a Seal Beach man's suicide. That was that man's personal decision and I don't blame anyone at all. But this event shows that we need additional access to more tools in a different community context to try to prevent mental health tragedies. To begin, I request one self-defense tool, the psilocybin containing mushroom. Not only is food always the first line of defense, but also this particular self-defense tool is at least tens of thousands of years the elder and wiser of any military tool the police access currently. Seal Beach has a local small town feel only because it is ironically surrounded by giant pieces of federal land. If we use the military's weaponry, can we use some of the military land for community permaculture food forest? This will keep Seal Beach safe from food supply chain issues that COVID has shown us and will be its first line of defense. To segue, I read in the Sun that new lower income housing is being required by the state. My idea is to request some of the abundant federal land for agricultural work in the form of a community food forest and build the new lower income housing for locals that work in that agricultural space. Only locals will do the agricultural work and the food can be sold directly to local residents and/or directly to local restaurants and grocery stores. We can maintain small town feel by building agricultural there, agriculture there and beat big business development's maximum extraction of profit strategy to the punch. In addition, we have run into Native American ancestral burial sites when developing Seal Beach land. We can respect their culture and Seal Beach's roots by growing sacred plants and fungus within the locals only food forest. This will emphasize the local community compassion of facilitation when these psychedelic medicines are consumed by Seal Beach residents pursuing happiness. In conclusion, I am essentially attempting to make my job here instead of applying to those that already exist. I believe I am what is missing. Maybe that makes me the court jester here, but I hope my artwork helps the Seal Beach City Council see what I am saying. We are all brothers and sisters. Peace and love, Seal Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nimesh Adani. I was here a week ago talking about the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center and what we have planning to do with this MOU. It's very divisive. I just wanted to bring to attention the Fair Political Practices Commission training that I'm assuming all city council members, including the mayor and the lawyers, go through. And it's, it's pretty clear that not only should you avoid conflict of interest, but you should avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest. I opened this up as a question. I know you're not supposed to answer, but really you don't see a conflict of interest here whatsoever? In what's being done? An elected official will be running a group in, in a public facility. Please think of that. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Ray E. Bobbin. Actually, my audience tonight is the people at home watching on Channel 3. We need your help, everybody watching. We need your help. We have what I believe to be a crisis, certainly a serious issue that has been revealed in this particular matter regarding the MOU. What's happened here is that a councilman who became enamored with pickleball, which as you can tell, many people have, decided the pickleball was growing and, and that he wanted to be the person that continued to work as the manager of the pickleball facility in Seal Beach. And so he brought that back to the city of Seal Beach, but not to discuss it with the council. He decided because he wanted to be the person managing things, that he would work directly with city management and staff and develop a business, sell that business service to the city and, and take over the position he was enamored by. Now, the reason we need your assistance, you people at home, we need you to contact your representative, call, email, whatever method you want. Because I've tried to communicate with the city council members, certain ones of them, and they don't seem to see the forest for the trees. So we need your help. If a person is a council member and uses their position to accomplish their own personal goals, then I regard that person as losing all respect. He's not pursuing his duty to do the best for the city. He's, he's decided to pursue his own ambition instead. That's not acceptable. It should never be acceptable. And somehow the city council finds no fault with it. So I regard that as a serious issue and that's why we need your help at home. Now furthermore, furthermore, Mr. Verapapa, as compared to many people who have been in the pickleball field for a number of years, has no experience, no qualifications at all to take on the position that, that he aspires to. So not only is the city council failing all of us in Seal Beach by closing his, their eyes to the conflict of interest here, they, they didn't even consider the issue of doing the best for Seal Beach pickleball by going after the best the best for Seal Beach pickleball by going after the best possible person to take care of growing the city, the city's pickleball facility. Now, I can't touch on this subject without pointing out that Brenda, who has been managing the center for, or leading its activities and development for the last eight years, is the one who began pickleball from scratch. She, she started with zero courts. There are now eighteen, seventeen courts, excuse me. And she has a proven record of observing what's going on in pickleball, looking at what the resources are that the city has available to help. And then, growing the pickleball facility as best she can with the cooperation of the city after she has worked with the city. Ignoring all that record to choose Mr. Vera Papa is a failure. All you at home, please talk to your representative, and let's get this straightened out. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name's Megan Shones, and I'm a resident of Seal Beach and a non-member at the Seal Beach Tennis and Pickleball Center. But I'm here today to also express my concern regarding the resolution that was awarded during the last council meeting. It's very apparent that the public is very concerned with this resolution on a variety of reasons, whether that's the concern of the misinformation that was, that was presented last meeting regarding the 10% and the 20%. The miss, the concern that this was already a done deal before the meeting, the concern of the conflict of interest, and the concern that non-members are going to be excluded from a public facility if this association takes over. So, the, I believe that the resolution that was awarded last week was prematurely awarded, and you guys can correct that mistake if you rescind that resolution and listen to your community regarding many very concerns that they have regarding this association. So, since I am a non-member, I am also very concerned that the amount of time that I'm going to be allowed to use the facility is going to become limited. I actually called the city and questioned that regarding some vague language that was written in the MOU, and I received a pretty vague answer. I, the answer that I received was, "No, that's not what that means." And so, I asked, "Could you further explain?" And I was told, "Oh, I'm not sure exactly what it means, but I just know it doesn't mean that." And so, that's very unclear. That's very not concrete. That's concerning for non-members as myself. And I think that the concern that the city council should have is not the growth that pickleball is going to have as, as intended for the association. They want to promote pickleball activities and promote memberships and grow it that way. I mean, that's going to happen naturally. This is the fastest-growing sport in America and maybe even the world. I'm not sure. But that growth is, is going to happen regardless of what entity is in there or not. And what the city council needs to be concerned about is who's best to equip to handle that growth, who's going to manage and maintain satisfaction between not just members but non-members and tournaments. And the person that's already in charge of that right now is doing a wonderful job. I mean, probably before this agenda item got on here, you probably didn't even have pickleball people coming to the city council meeting and speaking regarding of pickleball until this agenda item came on. Now you see this opposition and concern that the community has. So, I just encourage you to rescind the resolution. Thank you.
Hi. My name's Brenda Danielson. I'm not sure how many people were here when I got the position at the Seal Beach Tennis Center. I was a nervous wreck having to come down here and talk to everyone and introduce myself. But at that time, I was like, "It's going to be great. You should come down." And it's now July 19th was my meet-and-greet day, and it will start my ninth year this coming July. But I just wanted, I'm not sure you guys know what I've accomplished there. I've worked really hard. I'm a hard worker. But I just thought that I would share that. One thing I want you to know is that I love my job, and I'm good at it. I think that if you don't know, the numbers have, income is about tripled since I started. And so, when I first started, you could always get a court and no activities were running. Members of the community wanted to remove tennis courts to make the place more community-friendly with things like a basketball court and a climbing wall. From that first day to today, the center has gone from a ghost town to booming, booming with a full parking lot the majority of the day. To tell you what I have accomplished, my activities, there were four PacSun teams, and there are now seven PacSun teams, which is what the ladies leagues. There was no sanctioned USTA tournaments. Now I have 11 each year. The junior academy ran Monday and Wednesday afternoons. We now have a high school workout on Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons. There are no events running. I created the tennis flings and summer ladies leagues. I convinced the USTA to make the facility a dual facility, so anyone that plays USTA, you can play in the Orange County Division or the Beach City Division. That's a huge thing in USTA. Cypress High School started playing their matches at the SBTPC, paying a yearly fee for six years. I came up with the three-month summer pass memberships for those that are just in the community during the summer. There was no pickleball. I built the entire program from the start. We had Court 16 with my husband, his son, and Marilyn, and we used to play every Thursday morning from 9:00 to 11:00. And look at it today. I invented the pickle burger, the pickle pizza round robins. I created the annual Seal Beach Headpin Open Pickleball Sanction Tournament. I started a pickleball league. I found the pickleball instructors that we have now, except for Todd. We had zero. I used to teach it. We now have four. I replaced all the tennis instructors except Mickey and Ryan. I created a nonprofit. I'm not sure how many people know that I've created. It's called Friends of the Seal Beach Tennis Center. I created the thing with all member donations, including all the fees, attorney fees, and filing fees. I've paid for all the court canopies, except for two that ex-city council member Gary, that was from College Park East, donated money for. I paid for all the court trash cans, all the new benches at the center, the Adirondack chairs. I've created and paid for the nonprofit donor recognition board. I've paid for the TV stand, TV end stand in the kids' corner. I bought two ballmowers for the tennis instructors, paid for the coffee table and end tables in the clubhouse. I paid for kids to go through the junior academy. I've brought almost $30,000 in upgrades to the center. And anyone can donate to my nonprofit at any time. I don't take any salary. You know, I'm on top of all the accountings. The improvements that I've done, I've created the logos. There's the tennis center one, and I also have a pickleball logo and have paid to have them displayed throughout the center. I've paid for the scar keepers to be refurbished. I've added window boxes at the front. The city paid for the front gate, and I paid for the one that's on Court 10. I've personally brought furniture to the clubhouse, everything, bought furniture in the clubhouse, everything in the pro shop, all my office furniture, and paid for a portion of the mirrors in the gym. I taught Timon disinstalling the shed between Courts 12 and 13.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up.
I'll get it through. So, baskets were not in the kitchen. Had the city install plug outside for the clubhouse for events. Brought a printer, barbecue, tall ladder, tools, lots of things borrowed by the city when they're there. I provided the city with the wish list that Jill had asked me for after a walkthrough with Jill, Les, and David. And I changed the center name on the website long before it was ever on the front wall. All this has resulted in the income of the club tripling. Just thought that maybe if no one had told you that, you would want to know.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, thank you all. I'll now move on to city attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. City managers' report.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Okay, council comments. We'll start with.
I have nothing to report to save you.
Mike?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. I just want to say on April 19th, I attended the active training exercise at McGaw Elementary School. Chief Goncheck, Captain Henderson, and Ezra and their team were there, and all their officers. They did an amazing job during that exercise. I was really impressed with the real-life situation that occurred and how intense the situation was as they went through the exercises. Even though I was 18, 20 feet away, my nerves were shaky, and it was a little, little intense for me. And that was, the officers did a great job, and I really appreciate our police department doing that exercise. Thank you.
Okay, Shelley?
Thank you. I, I attended the spring fling in College Park East. We had, gee, probably a couple hundred people there. The Easter Bunny made an appearance, and there were three egg hunts that were very popular. The kids did an assortment of crafts, and everybody had a good time in nice weather, and it was a great day. And I also attended the West Orange County Water Board meeting on Zoom, and that's my report. Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank David Spitz again and the city manager for addressing the OCTA issue today with a detour through where we live in College Park West. Again, I want to enjoy helping out at the Centarian event at Leisure World last Wednesday, and looking forward to the car show next, this Saturday. And I'll be having breakfast by the pier, and I always look forward to looking at all the cars, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Last week, I attended a League of California Cities meeting. Senator, State Senator Dave Min was the keynote speaker, and there was a very lively discussion regarding the housing element issues that all of the cities are facing. And at least, you know, at least I came away feeling that we're, we're all in the same boat. But it was very, it was very informative. Wednesday evening at 5:00, both councilmember Vera Papa and I will be attending a coffee with a cop at Eisenhower Park. So, anybody and everybody is welcome to come. There is no agenda, no speeches, no anything but your opportunity to visit with our, members of our police department and Mike and myself. So, we hope to have a nice turnout. It'll be in the park, and Bogart's Coffee is donating coffee. So, if you need a, an afternoon jolt, come by. And that's all I have for this evening. So, we have no council items tonight. Let's see. The consent calendar. They're all considered to be routine items. They're enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members, which there were none. So, I'll now call for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote on your iPad. It looks like it passed. I vote.
Sorry, I'm past this five, though.
Thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings this evening. We have no unfinished or continued business. Under new business, we have Item H, which is the Street Lighting Assessment District. This involves the city adopting Number 1 Resolution 7276, initiating the annual levy of the street lighting assessment, and 2, Resolution 7277, setting the date for the public hearing for May 23rd, 2022, and 3, Resolution 7278, approving the engineer's report. No increase in assessments are projected for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. So, I'll call on our finance director to give us this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a, is it working? Probably need to talk louder.
We can get you a megaphone.
I'll, I'll just speak louder. Maybe I'm just not speaking into it loud enough. This is a routine item before you, in that we bring it to you every year. It's the annual levy of the assessments of the street lighting assessment district for fiscal year 2223. The budget this year is expenditures of $204,500, offset by assessments of $141,753, and a contribution from the city's general fund of $62,747. I also have Tony Thrasher here with me tonight. He's from Willdan Financial Services, and he helps us with this, running this program. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions or comments? Start with you, Tom.
Did you see the public comment about the Leisure World golf course?
Thank you. Yes, we saw the comment, but I was currently in route. So, we're going to need to look into it, but we definitely will look into it and see if they are properly classified as what they are, as I believe currently for moderate daytime and night use as opposed to just daytime use. So, we will definitely look into that, and if there are any changes or even as an update, we will bring that back for the public hearing.
Are there any other areas that might be in question like that?
Well, so, when the district is formed and as part of the way that the parcels are, are kind of set up in the system based off their land use, that's how they get charged. And so, unless there's a change that is triggered due to, say, building permits or a change of the parcel itself, then it doesn't get flagged in order to change, right? So, it's, there's nothing in the system would say to change based off of the county data that we receive. So, that would just be kind of a case of whether or not there's night use and determination of, you know, driving ranges or, you know, what actually is happening on the parcel. And so, there, there's still going to be some possible follow-up discussion too, right, on that.
Okay. And my other question was, haven't we moved towards LCD lights where the cost should go down?
So, we, I looked at, sorry, I've, I've looked at the, the history of all the utility charges, right, and kind of took it down. So, on the annual increase for the past 20 years has been a 2% increase. So, each year, if you take 2%, that's kind of where we're at now. There's been ups, there's been downs. It's gone up, it's jumped up, and it's jumped down. We don't know exactly what went into each of those annual increases for, say, you know, 2010, 11, and those sorts of things. So, there's likely been some improvements and some efficiencies gained through the bulb technology, but there's also increased electricity costs, and there's also increased number of lighting as well. And so, there's some, there's likely a confluence of issues that have contributed to just an overall 2% increase each year.
Okay, so, how big of a portion would be the LCD light? Is that, that does, isn't that significant?
So, I don't know as far as the inventory of the exact lighting within the districts. We get a, the budget for each year for the amount of utility costs, and so that would require more of an in-depth look of exactly what the inventories are and see if there's a record of what has been changed in the past to see, you know, kind of that, that progression, right, of bulb technology.
In the study, I couldn't see like a clear delineation by year in how much increase it was. Do you have something like that?
Yes. Yeah, we do have that information. It's actually quite small. So, I, I have that, but I can rattle them off, or if it's something that you'd like, then we can, can have that prepared.
Can you just rattle it off?
Yeah, sure. Where would you like to start? Well, because if I start with, I'll start with. Well, because if I start with, I'll start with, say, 2010, 11, I mentioned that already, right? So that year, the utility cost was $156,000.
Past five years.
Oh, past five years, good, right? All right, so 15, 16, it was $184,000 to $175,000 to $186,000, $186,000, $180,000, $186,000. Then in 2022, it jumped to 200.
Okay.
But, and so, yeah, overall, but it's interesting things, like, so if we go all the way back to 2001, 2002, it started off with $160,000, right? And then it went down. And so there's been a lot of ups and downs in those periods.
Okay, thanks.
Shelley. So probably the cost of electricity, regardless of whether it's LCD or not, that increases and that gives us an increase every year? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the exact same lighting that was in place back in 2000 is not the exact same thing that is in the ground right now. So there's been some change, the number of bulbs, the amount of lighting, definitely the electricity cost, and as the bulbs change out, and that all does change. There is no mention, and I have no record of LCD lights being used. What we get is the amount of cost of the utilities. And so instead of the actual inventories of what's there, we want to know what is the annual cost of lighting needed for the district.
And my other question is just the difference between the residential load density. Is it just a function of density and how you divide it up for a certain amount of streetlight coverage?
So it would be, but as those lights change, and we were talking about a time period of over 20 years now, so a lot of things have changed in that. And the addition, and the actual district itself doesn't change, right? So the parcels that are in there, the amount that can be charged, that doesn't change and remains flat, which is why you see, on average, you know, the city's general fund contribution has increased. That's really started in 11, 12, and that has increased, on average, it's 0.1% per year. So it doesn't look like much each year. It can feel like it, right, as it's hitting the general fund, but it's increased at 0.1% per year since that period once the reserve fund ran out on that district.
Okay, thank you.
I have no, well, because I can't hear very well, I didn't put my hearing aids in. Did you say that it is not a consistent increase over, say, the last five years? Is that what you were saying?
So I'd say consistent, that term, I would say it has increased over the past five years. There's been a couple of years where it remained the same.
Okay, what's the difference in percentage, say, five years ago to today?
So it's, I could say it went from a
Roughly.
Roughly, it went maybe 5%. From 80, 184 to what you have before you, 195.
Oh, okay. All right. That, it doesn't sound like a lot to me. But I also know that over a period of time, we can't keep taking it out of the general fund. So, and I know it's a big deal to change the rate. You have to go to a vote and the whole thing. So I think that this year is kind of a big decision whether or not, in our upcoming budget, that we make a decision of whether or not we're going to go out and fund it properly. So that's just kind of my loose thinking at this point. I think that what you've done is okay, barring the adjustment for the Leisure World Golf Course, of course. But, you know, I think this is something that we need to think about in next year's budget, and it's coming up pretty quick. So we, this is really good information for us to know. Thank you.
It seems to me that by converting as much as we can in the way of lighting to LED or other types of lighting, that the effect has been, it's kept our head above water. As the cost of electricity keeps going up, we are able to kind of maintain, you know, our head above water because we have invested in a lot of the more efficient lighting. But as Sandra says, that the day of reckoning may, you know, the benefit, we may have every light in the city converted to LED, and it's, the benefits are going to start, you know, slipping. So, yeah, I think that we need to have some discussion about where we're going to put the money in the meter. Thank you. Any other questions that you thought about? Okay, then I'll call for a motion in a second for the three resolutions, 7276, 7277, and 7278.
Can I appoint, I have a question.
Yes.
Do we vote if he needs to fix the Leisure World Golf Course amount of money? Or do we have to postpone it and come back with it at a next meeting?
No, you have another action to come in May. If there's a correction needed before the assessment is actually levied, you can do it at your public hearing in May.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Then I'll move.
You'll move? A second?
I'll second.
Okay, then would you please vote on your iPad? That carries five oh. Thank you.
Carry five oh, thank you.
Thank you. All right, since we have no other business, I will now adjourn the city council to Monday, May 9th, 2022, at 5:30 PM to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you, everyone, for watching and attending.
Great.